Barbara, we're Mrs. N. Hutt, we're Dr. Meier.
Here.
Smitty, we're Mrs. Morris, we're Mrs. Patrick.
I think this is the type of environment you set aside for your visitors because if anyone wishes to address the board. All the people in the audience, it's a home, so we will move on. Communications, Dr. Doherty.
Thank you. Mr. Hutcheson is going to help us with this. Tonight, we're congratulating our Class of 2021 Illinois State Scholars.
Thank you, Dr. Doherty. Very lucky this year. Our Class of 2021 Illinois State Scholars are Mason Bates, Ryan Bates, Howard Kerlock, Elise Clayton, Lansing Clark, Chloe Delavan, Connor Durand, Colton Maribert, Marcus Goodman, Katie Pulten, Margaret Holthaus, Melanie Kildon, Alarina Leventun, Macy Mann, Avery McCollum, Max Moplin, Emma Moore, Isabel Norris, Jordan Reeder, Reece Brandle, Cameron Ryland, Tyler Ward, Cameron Stevens, Macy Wester, Kylie Wolf, and Zachary Will. Come around with applause.
How many of the kids are in the meeting tonight? You're here, you were just named by your principal. Would you please stand up and come forward just so everybody can... So as you know, those state scholars, it's GPA and its scores, entrance, college entrance scores that the statistics that are reviewed, and that's an external review process and then they look at the school and who qualifies. So congratulations, we're very proud of you. The next area that needs an update is our scholarships. And I had to write it off, I didn't foil it off.
I've got that, Dr. Doherty.
We have, let me give you the first figure first. This was Friday when we did the print. We had 1.758 million dollars in scholarships for our seniors for launching. Between then and now, it has creeped up to...
One million, nine hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred forty dollars.
One, nine, nine, one.
Seven, four, zero.
Okay, so Sunday, Sunday, the act program will have their awards banquet. There will be scholarships tied to that process that are going to bump us over the $2 million mark on scholarships sending our kids. So tremendous effort. Were we at seventeen hundred last year, or seven, 1.7 million last year?
Yeah.
So even we were really worried with getting our kids exposure and getting scholarships because of COVID and because of all the shutdown with everything all over the place. So we've been scrambling behind the scenes and really working to make this happen, and so have the kids. That's a tremendous showing for our school. Congratulations, Mr. Hutcheson, and... and our students.
In 1957 was the first scholarship, the upper scholarship, $1,500. Can you imagine where it's coming? $1,500 in 1957, but there are $2 million now.
Mr. Harper, 1957 started the scholarship program with a $1,500 scholarship. So to grow from that to over $2 million in 2021 is just remarkable. Thank you. The next is just three updates I'd like to share. May 23rd is his graduation at 6:00 p.m. There will be a twilight parade that follows. We'll assemble at the fairgrounds and we'll take the typical route back through town. For our graduation to comply with what's going on with the governor's orders, we are looking at him putting us to the bridge phase on the 14th, which is this Friday. And that means he can be at 60% capacity for indoor, so that will help tremendously. We had to plan prior to that vote, and we were hoping and praying that he would agree with us. What we have in place right now is six tickets per graduate, and that gets us to the legal number and pretty good amount in the gym. What we had asked them to do was to have the partial list of vaccinated people and partial two that were not vaccinated. So we are in a safer position, even with the plans. We don't need to update our plans. But we're feeling a little bit more confident with what the governor is going to do. And then we heard he's going to take us to the next phase in June. We heard June 11th is what is kind of the predictive date. So that helps tremendously. May 26th will be the last day for students on campus. Anybody want to cheer? May 27th will be the last teacher work day at Quicken Institute. Any cheering? It's been a rough year. Good job. Okay, now for the big event of the evening. We have two amazing 2021 Taylorville State Champions. The first is our yearbook layout and design. It's a double-page award, and it goes to Senior Elise Clayton. Elise was given a project that was a bit of a puzzle, and she is led by Steve Steele. He's with us here tonight. Steve Steele expertly runs our journalism program, and his listing of what goes well is really long. So it is an amazing program, and here he sits with the state championship. The two of them are going to come forward. We have on the screen displayed the two-page spread that she won with, and they're going to explain the process to us so we can kind of understand what the task was at hand. Elise.
Okay, so the IHSA journalism competition is mainly writing and designing events, and we'll get to the video event later. But I had 90 minutes to create a double-page spread with the pictures and story provided. They actually provided me six pictures, and it's a design role that you have to have at least five of each friend. So that was the biggest struggle with this. But I just had to call away the elements of design and put together something eye-catching, and I guess it worked.
Yeah, it definitely worked. Whenever Elise had already submitted, she showed me her layout, and I just thought, wow. It's so colorful, it has great contrast. The cutout, we call it, on the right-hand side of Valerie, very few, very few people attempt that, especially in a 90-minute time period. So she just did an outstanding job. And overall, all the kids that were in did an outstanding job. I think out of the 15 categories in the IHSA competition, Taylorville High School sent 13 competitors out of the 15 categories to the state finals from the section. So they did really, really well.
Elise has her sister here visiting from college tonight. Could you just ever stand up? It's nice to have support. We really appreciate the effort. Thanks for coming back to your alma mater. The next award Izzy Miller is going to announce. And Izzy is the recipient of this award. She's going to announce her team. But this is the video news, and we've got Senior Toby Linens, Junior Izzy Miller, and Sophomore Macy Richards involved in this project. Take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Doherty. So we have an awesome team of 2020 TV members, but we're very grateful that the three of us were able to work together on this project. So Macy Richards, she was mostly our editor, and she helped with the planning process, of course. Toby, he walks around the camera. He hits the infrared camera. So he was our cameraman. He's very good at what he does. So he does capturing video, which is the videos you see between the videos, between the talking that kind of helps tell the story, which is very important, I think, from the video. And I did the, I was the news anchor, if you will. So I had to introduce the video, kind of tell the story and tell the story that was brought across. So our prompt was how has COVID-19 affected the mental health of students throughout this past 2020, 2021 school year? And of course, it has affected us a lot. So we kind of had firsthand on how it affected us, but also we got some information from students and administration alike to discuss that topic. And we, against the section most first, which our prompt for that was how the pandemic has affected teachers, administration throughout the year as well. So we had a lot of, there were people we could interview, but we didn't have as much time. So we were staying, we took as much time as we could to get the information we needed beforehand. So we met almost every day after school for a couple hours to discuss our plan of attack, how they can handle this, how to be better than other cities around us that are competing, and how to stand out. So we captured video throughout the whole week, set up interviews. We spent a lot of time after school, but we couldn't have done it without, I don't know, this meal on Wednesday at home. So can you round the applause for them? They were our life and journey's process. And so we couldn't actually edit any things until the day of the event, because that's when the real action does happen. And you would think, you watch this video, oh, that you could do that in like three hours. You would be surprised how much work does go into this one, this two-minute video. Because the max is two minutes, so you had to cram a bunch of information as you could in one video. And I think we're pretty proud of the fully accomplished. We actually are all together when we found out we made the state. But we are, we've been celebrating ever since we won out of over 50 schools. So we're very proud of our, proud of our group, and this is our year one of actually having a class. Year two, if you count the club, but we're very proud of our accomplishment. So I think we've done very good.
Today, I'm at Abraham High School, discussing the negative impacts and surprisingly positive effects on students' mental health during the pandemic.
I think kids are just confused and just want to be told what to do and know what to expect. Disruption of life has been really, really impactful and really overlooked most of the times. I think we stay around the, I'm anxious and I don't quite know why. There's not been a whole lot of, well, you know, maybe it's just simple because it's different.
We sent down the students at Abraham High School, and they shared their personal experience with mental health during quarantine due to the coronavirus.
I've been very anxious around my grandparents and my family. And, you know, being at school, I get very anxious with someone's coffee.
I just feel slushed from the hall and lazy, and I don't take things that should be taken serious, serious anymore. And I just can't even imagine how seniors feel because any day now, their senior year did just get over, just like that.
To worship athletes because, like, both of us are seniors, and we wonder the last time we're gonna have our practice, it's just gonna be our lives.
Well, administration claims that there is a lack of motivation. Some students say they have found positive outlets to keep them going as the pandemic has continued.
Golf was a deep save by our governor, and I heard that before, which meant that I could be out there. And, you know, whenever things was going bad in the world, the one good thing I loved was golf. And it made me very happy.
I've been able to go to agriculture and miss, that apple will help prepare me for my future, and it will help build my self-esteem.
As students are returning back to school, teachers are seeing a change in students' attitudes and behaviors. As the longer the pandemic, teachers learn to assist students that struggle with their mental health. Reporting from Abraham High School, this is JT Young, WAHS TV 16 News.
And Mr. Mill, one's time to please stand and be recognized. Accompanied by Adam Hoax. Thanks for being able to join that program. It's remarkable.
Thank you, Dr. Doherty. We'll see what we can do about giving you guys a sign. I think we might have to pull these strings and get one more, because I think winning the state championship is a nice one. Then we've got to be four current letters, and also the only candidate for the journalism department. So thank you very much, guys. Oh, you add that to the regular board business. I started with the student agenda in your practice. We had two meetings, I believe, with the men's. Do you look, does anyone have any corrections to either one? Yeah, okay. All right, we'll move on. Move. Planings. Any outstanding plans that's left on the board, or is everything pretty much normal?
Very normal. Things are pretty normal. There are some grant expenditures that you're going to start to see coming through. This one reflects the social emotional curriculum that was purchased and tied to a grant, but you're going to see those grant cycles being closed down. The rest is pretty much boilerplate, it's payroll, it's benefits, a little bit of professional development, some nursing CPR training and materials. The other thing that happens in this time, we make our bond payments, and in December, you make the bulk of the payment, and then this morning, you make the interest payment. So that includes bond payments on before the year.
Oh, thank you. Any question about any other plans? All right, move on to the charge report.
We're going to cover that when you can get into the...
We're going to, you open it off, okay. Now, do you want to already consent and turn it over? Does he manage the budget by giving it to them?
Um, will you go over just...
Yeah, I didn't see too much. Oh, I know there's some, I also went down and that's a good book.
Okay, yeah. So it looks like we went, we spent $50,000 more towards the fund than what we brought in, which is actually really good because last year, we were providing $640,000 less than what we brought in this month last year. So actually, we're right on the budget. We're completely down, watching our expenditures very close. Education fund, yeah, $53,000, OAN, $94,000. Debt services increased $113,000, transportation increased $77,000. IMRF decreased $22,000, IOMEN increased $30,000. Cabinet projects funding is $54,000 more. Working cash money is $163,000 more. TORT, community judgment, $29,812 less. Fire prevention, $70 a head. So all in all, all together, we spent $10,036.91 more this month than what we brought in.
We did have another transfer pension payment?
Yes.
That's surprising, because usually we don't have that.
Yeah.
Anyone?
Yeah, with the, this was thankful, we must come through with what they promised they would do this year with their resources.
Yes, actually, we've done better than expected. We've received an extra, shame I didn't expect it. Actually, maybe we didn't expect anything. Transportation from regular and special lines. So really good.
Normally, for short-term transportation, so this is excellent. Anyone have any other questions for Wendy about the... On the consideration of personnel change, we have the, I think it's an updated sheet that I have on my table. And also in the packets, we have recommendations, have deployed the principal. And Dr. Doherty included just a packet, processed things, and it says, like, committee, like, we've interviewed. It was a very thorough job of doing that. Thank you for including that, and show us why. You want to go into personnel change?
Yes. So just to follow up with Mr. Principal's comment on the process for hiring new principals, the principal selection committee came out of the school improvement team at Memorial School. Memorial School's school improvement team met, and they decided on key criteria, and then they nominated colleagues from their building to serve on the team. So we have three individual employees from the school. We have a parent from the school, we have the curriculum director from the district, and myself served on the team. And they selected, screened candidates to be interviewed. We had 10 candidates in the pool. We screened four, three of them, four of them for interviews and one scratched. So we interviewed the three principals and selected the top candidate. It was unanimous, the committee. Are you here tonight? Okay, we do have our top candidate here in the audience tonight. She was hoping she'd be able to make the meeting. Okay, so we'll go through the personnel sheet, starting with retirements. We've got Reggie Kellenstein, who's a special education aide at Taylorville Junior High School. She retires the end of the school year. Mel White, third-grade teacher at Memorial School, retires the end of the school year. Roseanne Hopps, Taylorville Junior High School teacher, retires the end of the school year. Resignations. Alexandra Danhoy, special education teacher at Memorial, effective the end of the school year. Rebecca Simpson, pre-K aide, Washington School in Dana, effective the end of the school year. Claire Nolan, SCL counselor, North School, effective June 3rd. Sydney Miller, Taylorville High School assistant cheer coach, effective the end of the 2021 school year. Tanya Goodwell, eighth-grade girls' basketball coach, effective the end of the school year. Lindsay Davis, technology assistant at the district, effective May 27th. We have one change of assignment, is Ashley Hughes moving from sixth grade at the junior high to fifth grade at the junior high, effective for next school year. A request for a leave of absence, Dustin Stoneton, custodian, Taylorville High School, FMLA lead, effective approximately May 24th. A recommendation to employ, Michelle Reese, principal, Memorial School, effective 7/1. Michelle comes from, with a master's degree from Eastern Illinois University. And Anna Sack, science teacher, Taylorville High School, effective August 16th. She has a bachelor's plus zero from the Missouri University of Science and Technology with two years' experience. Mackenzie Koppen, social science teacher, Taylorville High School, effective August 16th, bachelor's plus zero, University of Illinois Springfield, pending the completion of her graduation requirements and licensure in May, with zero years' experience.
Thank you, Dr. Doherty. Glad to see we got those last two positions held on. Anyone have any questions about personnel? Right, can I add a motion to the...
I just wondered, maybe kind of, on the paper that shows the principal hiring process on the last page, or shows the difference. From our student spirit, or the principal's. There are thousands of results that may have, and this is just a comment, but thousands of things now and now. May changes, may the principal position that, you know, there's motion, and they're people worrying. Like, if I was questioning after, or if I was running a special line, or principal, moving around, you know, and then... It's not, but you're a special organization now, but it's kind of, it's kind of a different line. There's no, there's no reason given for opportunity.
Jessica Millen, was it the junior high, or even the technology director for the whole day? Yes, so that's a position, it was a new position. Actually, it wasn't the Christmas that built that. And if you have any other, or one of the things we have with the remote and during COVID, was we're going to have the technology in place to do remote learning. But the usage was hidden, yes, some teachers were really good somewhere. And that was a weakness that we saw. But I think for the previous board, it's in the, correct administration to, discipline, to more, to specialize more. That's more the reason Jessica does. And we look forward to Jessica helping to get higher this year. Instead of what, and she did great things at the junior high. And now I think that can help everybody in the district, and you can help apparently. I had in that position, which replaced Chris's position, the principal position, we moved her over to the junior high. So they're all there. There's no money difference because Chris wasn't certified. The thought process was there to improve the district, the cost, while there wasn't, this was not the fault. But that answer your question, probably? Yeah. I think, one of the things, if I get the world lucky to do this, I can do it with the money. So just while you still have to adjust your expenses, and I know later the nickel, but you might hit 10, 20% less than extra. We're applying for, we're trying to, we're preparing for that. And this cost for this, the benefit it's going to bring to this, which I think, given the note, we had your note, or just the impact for uses of the technology, this is what we're trying to do. Anyone else? Okay, I have a motion ready to be settled. Trish Marver made the motion. Second was Sarah Van Ness. Have a go, hold, hold, please.
Mrs. Smitty. Mrs. Norris. Mrs. Patrick. Miss N. Hutt. Dr. Meier. Mrs. Markberger. Mr. Gressner.
Yes, motion carries. We'll move on to whole business. Oh, I'm sorry. Michelle, I guess you're a special one, and now welcome to the Taylorville School.
The district will send out an official bio on Michelle with a photo that's worthy for the media to print. But just so you know, she comes to the district with teaching and principal experience. Most recently, she's been serving at Haddonburg, so she's got pretty good job experience. Prior to that, she was at Auburn, and prior to that, she was an instructor. She lives in Taylorville with her husband Casey, and they have a junior high daughter, Mel, in seventh grade, and an elementary son, Fulton, in fifth grade. The, this was really important. Mr. Reeder has been known to have Harvey with him. So some of the students at his school think it's Hardy's school. So when we got all finished with our interview process, the parent on the committee said, I could just have one more question. Does she have a dog? And I, so I asked her that. So she has a Bernadoodle, two dogs, a Bernadoodle and a Havanees. And her Bernadoodle is in school, so this will be an official dog. And then we keep other unusual pets. So we're real pleased, and we'll get some more information out to the community on Michelle, but we're pleased to have her with us. Do you have your family with you tonight?
Yes, I do.
Oh, boy, can...
Noah, Fulton, and I, too, and everyone.
Thank you. We're happy to have you.
All right, we go on to whole business. All right, COVID-19, return to the board update. Glad to start with this, with your 22 regular day schedule. Dr. Doherty?
Just in your packet, you have a document from IHSA to the School Board Association with key considerations for school boards. And in the last couple of weeks, I've attended some law conferences, school board association meetings, and school superintendent association meetings, just to kind of get the lay of the land in the state beyond our schools to see what expectations are. And it looks like the expectation across the state is that we go back full day, in person, full calendar in the fall.
All right, that's welcome news to everyone. I know the state has some suggestions we could have more to look at, and I think once we see the results of the testing, the state testing initiative, or we need to give it, give it back up to schedule. Anyone have any questions on this? All right. Now we'll move on to consider and approve the national tax membership and participation agreement. You guys remember that a few months ago, during those COVID snaps, the cost per firm, federal, it hit to the point where if it would have been a session, we would have had to close the school, not been able to have enough money to heat it. And the bills in Stoneton were astronomical for a lot of people, and we're supposed to really pay some of those. Dr. Doherty, how has this helped us here?
And so what we did is we did an investigation on all of the vendors who have commodity services for school districts. And so what we did is we did an investigation on all of the vendors who have commodity services for school districts. And the best that we found was the Illinois non-for-profit corporation called Illinois Energy Consortium. It is a subsidiary of the school board association, and they are in business to help schools find the lowest cost for energy. They sponsor a natural gas purchasing pool for Illinois educational institutions, design some of its contained costs. This process has taken us one half of the year, and included an extensive review of our district's consumption. Available vendors and best negotiated rate per firm moving forward. The membership is, um, with the school board association, as I said a minute ago, and it's a non-for-profit affiliate. Um, so you will see that the contract, there is a three-year agreement to work with them, so that they can continue to go to the rates. Now, as you would recall, we worked with the former, um, Anorin administrator, who went through and did a thorough analysis of our usage, all the meters and all of the, um, the terms that go across the district. And we know that this summer, as soon as school closes, we're putting in three different systems in our schools, we're heating and air conditioning. So we expect to be able to contain our energy costs even further through them. But here is the contract, and this allows us to utilize that purchasing agreement.
Anyone have any questions? I think this is a good idea, and hopefully it'll satisfy, um, I know a lot of school districts going to purchase their companies again, and this is wonderful. We have a motion to approve. Dr. Meiser, second. Trish Hubbard. We have a vote, all votes placed?
Mrs. Mickey. Mrs. Norris. Mrs. Patrick. Miss Van Hutt, the, Dr. Meiser.
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger. And Mr. Bruce.
Yes. Motion carries. Last thing we want to vote business is to consider the purchase of the mental health fund, which is on the junior high school. Uh, to get some of the board members up to date, uh, right before COVID struck, we had taken it out of the building, from the, from the broadhead, and to make an offer on the mental health fund. Uh, at the time, we were thinking about using it for the administration building, uh, which could still be a possibility. Also, we were going about early talk of, of programs with the parents, not the, or, I don't know the exact name of the program, but there are uses for. More importantly, that lands us to the junior high next door. And we have talked about doing different things, for, for, trying to, and, and even going to the city, and seeing if they would seek part of the funding to us for the lawsuits. Uh, this is something we don't have to make a decision on tonight, but we can have a discussion. They are holding the property for us to, until we decide this, and probably have to let the committee have to delay. But, uh, well, you've worked on this a lot, and you care to tell them what's going on?
I'm, I'm carrying two wands here, because I find the health court also. Uh, and, uh, they have, uh, there's no mental health there anymore, and so the building is vacant. Uh, I know there was another, uh, outfit that, that was interested in it, that they passed on, a hospital has passed on it. And it does have the location. I know that I, uh, went through the, the building, and I've seen the plans. I would be, uh, really a good thing for us to do, but I, you know, I know we have three new board members. Possibly, it would be a good idea if we discussed this, uh, so that everybody could take a look at it, because I know some of us have, some of us haven't. But, uh, this is the location, and, uh, I think it would be very beneficial if we could get for a price within our range. Uh, and, uh, make it good administrative, so, anyway.
Thank you, Ryan. Uh, anybody have any questions as well, considering this, this table, and it's on the next meeting, and if we have a strategic planning meeting? This is something we can discuss, because I wonder if everybody would be comfortable with it, either a yes or a no. Uh, but if you have some questions tonight anyway, or if you want to, especially if, if not, I would urge everyone to walk around the building. There's quite a few parking spaces, and, uh, that we could utilize, and, um, building's in good shape, it's a solid brick building, the roof is in good shape. I think with the addition, um, wants to be sure that we didn't have the usages of, of, of.
Yeah, I think there was a recommendation to stable it.
Okay. Okay. So if you want me to make a motion to take this, we can get it. Trish Hubbard, motions to take, and then, and then the second? I'm sorry, that, I, it's totally light, I was going to stabilize that, and then, second, but yes. So, um, all in favor, aye? Aye, opposed? Okay, so that is clear. Yeah, it is back on the market, and, um, this came back, and they are, because they didn't want to set the, 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 that side. Hopefully, we'll decide one way or another. All right, on to new business. Oh, we can talk, I, I want to tack on the building, to be, to tie it, and talk about it, yeah. Okay, on to new business, review of budget amendment, which is mandatory, displayed for you, it's part of the adoption. Dr. Darby?
So the business department, led by Wendy Delacas, myself, prepared their budget. And we have a presentation that we're going to take, and it's over on the, the whiteboard. You have a document in front of you that matches the presentation, and you also have a highlighted Excel document, they're going to be sent together.
Okay, I have given each one of you three different pages. The big plaque right here, this is the full amended budget, which you can, on the very back of the packet, you can receive. The second one is in color, and it is the budget summary. Uh, this is what we're going to be going over, it's art, the amended budget. I figure this will be a little easier for you to follow along with any color and smaller. Okay? Okay. So, school budgets are documented in nine funds, established by the state. Some are restricted, but all have purpose. Our largest fund, this is, um, our largest fund, where a majority of the expenses come from, is the education fund. This means it's not only for benefits, we have the people business, so most of everything we spend, it should be, it's out of your benefits. This is kind of your rundown of what the education fund is. It's the largest and most versatile of all the funds, and is used for the bulk of school district expenditures, including educational expenses, such as salaries and benefits related to the construction program, administration, educational materials, staff development, child programming, special education, and the life program. Any additional expenses that are not specifically included in that other fund, it's named the education fund. Revenues are included, but are not limited to local private classes, student fees, letting in committees, tuition fees, donations, state grants, and other programs. Okay, so, the current budget is the original budget that we are in right now. The amended budget is what we're proposing. So what we're proposing is a decrease in projected ending fund balance of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, uh, a hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Okay, so changes to the education fund. Revenues are additional one million twenty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars. Uh, this is, we have reduced interest on investments, all interest on investments is down this year, so every fine you can see are reduced production interest. It's down a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the previous, or a hundred and eighty-six thousand. There's reduced income from the basic program, around a hundred and thirty-five thousand, partly due to our reduction of students from the office. Food service revenue down two hundred and thirty thousand. We did receive an additional eight hundred and ninety-one thousand. We have fourteen dollars from the CLC program, a digital equity grant, an additional one hundred and forty-eight thousand. We also received additional grant revenue from the VET title and IDPA. Those were extra payments that we weren't expecting to get this year. We also received a fighter plane, content of the jet fighter, outback, is two thousand dollars. Some additional expenses for one point one junk in. Additional spending on new grants, a million one thousand. Additional tech contracts and supplies for the mobile, is a hundred thousand. The food service cost goes down two hundred and thirty thousand. Right now, we're in the middle of a grant cycle, so revenue is getting received, while we're still paying the expenditures, expenditures of the grants. We received several grants late in the year, so, um, we have a lot of expenses out of those, without me receiving revenue yet. Um, revenue this year looks different than in previous years. Usually, it's a four, six, twenty-four, ten split. This year, we receive seventeen percent of the benefit, and usually, we receive about ten percent. So this is all due to extra grants that we're receiving this year. Uh, the exit, a lot of the corporate grants. Education expenditures, salaries and benefits went down, also supplies, services, equipment, and other objects increased. Last year's salaries and benefits was about seventy-two percent of our education fund. This year is sixty-eight percent. So our salaries and benefits did go down. The only reason, though, is supplies, services, equipment, and other items increased was because of the grades, the, the extra federal grades that we're receiving. Okay, so salary and cost reduction into budget work and rent utilization. Like I said, it goes from seventy-two to sixty-eight percent for salaries and benefits. So the only increase since I've been that we've had this year was for special education programs. Um, the increase total about a hundred and eight thousand. Well, we brought down salaries this year by six hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So we saved almost seven hundred thousand dollars in salaries, not, not replacing, uh, ages, or teachers, or, uh, the, the, we can't, we can't have anymore. We combined two different classes, with a lot of different budget work. Okay, uh, special education. So we have the basic program, the cost division got a hundred and fifteen thousand. So we go, we have sixty-three percent of the basic program, while receiving tuition from the cost of Dana, and all the other basic programs, which is time and information for the same only. This is included in the total cost of special education program. So we have all the expenses, salaries, benefits, special services, supplies, payments, and, and, versus the revenues. We have EDA, IDP, IDA, special attacks, and this IDA, and the basic program. So altogether, the total cost of the special ed program is about two point one million dollars. Sorry, trying to get the product around. Okay, well, it's not a special education class. Okay, so the district currently employs four SCL counselors, and the district's call to all directors that help the district socially. By hiring our own speech, language, pathologist, psychologists, and social workers, the district, for the state, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per year. Currently, we have four speech, language, pathologists, two full-time, and one interned psychologist, and three full-time social workers. Next year, we could credit to three full-time, one part-time speech speakers, two full-time, one interned psychologist, and one full-time, and one interned social worker. So this is the special education area, we could save about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So we're going to start talking about these athletic costs. They have some people calling, upset that they're still having to pay for their athletic needs. So, this is kind of a great, how much athletic costs does? This is our, we have athletics, and athletics expenses of five hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-five. We still have to approach the benefits, the officials who still have to buy some supplies and equipment, and some ingredients. Our only revenues for athletics are admissions, entry fees, participation fees, and donations. So just this year, athletics cost us five hundred and twenty-six thousand and forty-five dollars. That is why we are still charging athletic fees.
We sometimes have to jump out, have to handle.
O and M. Okay, we're on O and M. So, O and M is fun fun. O and M is also known as the building fund. Expenses related to the operation and maintenance of facilities, including utilities, salaries, and contractual maintenance, clean supplies, utilities, and capital and projects are included in this fund. Revenues for the operations and maintenance fund, from property taxes, initial support, and money donations. So currently, the current budget for the projected ending fund balance, at the end of this year, is seven hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven. According to the amended budget, it's planning at seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven, which is an increase of fifty-six thousand nine hundred and nine hundred dollars in the year. Revenues are increased by seventy-four thousand five hundred, and that is if we receive less interest, about eleven thousand five hundred. We receive less donation, we stopped at three thousand, but we received a property damage plan, which is dead, a hundred and eighteen thousand. Expenditures are an additional seventeen thousand six hundred. That is a reduction in building and purchase of the original budget of a hundred and twenty-four thousand. Decrease in scheduled heating supplies of twenty-four thousand. Property damage plan, budget for payout of a hundred and eighteen thousand, decrease in scheduled equipment of about twelve thousand. Now we're on debt service fund. There you go, thank you. All right, debt service fund, fund thirty. Debt service fund is formerly the bond and interest fund. It uses tax revenues to make a principal, and it's on bonds, and some charges on other long-term debt issuance. Revenue includes tax,利息, interest, and sale of bonds. And this one is a little confusing, because we did bond out this year. So the original budget, the ending, ending projected fund balance is seven hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and ninety-four. If you look at the amended budget on here, the revenue for two thousand, or two million ninety-five thousand, expenditures are two million five thousand. Experiences are eighty-two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Our revenue increased by eighty-two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Now that is a facility tax payment, and that is expected, facility tax payment. But if you look at the projected ending balance, it's one million eight hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-three. Doesn't look like it adds up, so we'll go to the next page, to explain it. The positive payoff percentage side is the line seventy-eight. So, when you look at your budget summary, that extra money for the payoff, the bond payoff, in your fund thirty, it is not in the budget summary. It is down below. So that's why it's not showing on the rest of the screen, that's off. It's just going to dip up on, and show the fund balance, so it can be here. Everyone see that, in the, in the, on the second page, right in there? Okay. Revenue is included in the ending fund balance, not of the amended budget. The additional one million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand not used in the payoff is held in the bond account for capitalized interest. Capitalized interest is interest that will be counted to on the bond prior to receiving sufficient taxes. There's no change in base expenses on the budget, on the, on the. Okay, transportation. Okay, transportation. Okay, transportation is fund forty. As a name and face, this fund puts us on transportation expenses, including forever salaries and benefits, contracts, bus service costs, faculty and maintenance. Revenue is received from property taxes, interest, and state transportation aid. State aid received is sometimes referred to as categorical. The district receives two types of categorical payments from the state enders, historically the state go rates and the next payments. Thus, the budget, one payment from previous year to two payments for current year, opposed to four that are within the year. That's why Dr. Meiser was so excited regarding the other transportation. Usually we only get one payment from last year, two from this year. Well, this year we got three payments for this year, so that's actually really good. So the projected ending fund balance, original budget was $37,421. The amended budget is $624,421. So we actually increased our fund balance by $307,000 this year. The additional revenue The additional revenue is $232,000. Prediction interest is $10,000. The additional regular vocational payment of $130,000. And the additional special education payment of $112,000. The expenses decreased by $75,000 because we renegotiated the contract. Alright, municipal retirement, social security. One more. Okay, fund fifty. Municipal retirement, social security, also called retirement fund, non-certified employees such as teachers, students, and students studying, who put in minimum of 600 hours a year, participate in attention from the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. School board collects property taxes and also utilizes CPPRC and interest payments on behalf of eligible employees in IRF. This fund also pays for social security and medical. Revenues for this fund are primarily supported by property taxes, supplemented with CPPRC, with personal property return tax and interest. The original budget projected in fund balance is $365,531. The amended budget is $292,931, which is a decrease, which is actually a decrease in fund balance of $23,600. The at least caused by the additional revenue of $24,100, which was supplemented with more CPPRC money, we had to do that because of the increase on the IRF. But for the seventh story, we increased the expenses by $27,000. This will let me do a math back, it's set by the state IRF itself, not the community movement. Takes a difference in that, it's just how many people retired from previous year, how much they pay out, it's how much the IRF may change. Okay, capital projects fund. This is fund sixty. This fund is used to pay for major facilities related to capital improvements. Revenue for this fund come from property taxes, interest, for building connected bond processes. Okay, so this is another one where the effects are, what we receive from our bonds. So we were expecting a projected ending fund balance of $71,835. We currently have $14,093,056. And again, we're assuming revenues and expenses, we don't see that additional $14 million, and that's because we don't put it so down in the budget to show that we do receive it from a bond. The district received bond revenue of $14,971 on March 11. The deposit was vested into the bond fund and moving to capital projects. Revenue does not show on the net pay loss in the budget summary, appears on line thirty-five, let's carry on. Principal bond sold at the summary, revenue included in ending fund balance amount of the amended budget. Capital project revenues are down $1,230 for both bonus interest. And expenditures are down because of a reduced price from the new high-end building. The working cash fund is fund seventy for all tax purposes. The working cash fund is a cash flow account that is provided by the district as a means of income. The working cash fund accepts property tax receipts from proceeds from the sale of certain toll bonds. However, no expenditures can be made from it, whether it's funded in lend dollars as needs to other funds. Some or all of the funds reserves may be transferred to another fund, specific loss-governance type of transactions. This fund is also called on a beginning loan. According to the original budget, projected ending fund balance was $18,166,180. The amended budget is $11,142,580, is down $13,600 from the course of the interest, the increase in interest. Okay, the short fund, fund eighty. Shorter community and judgment fund is used to pay for cost of district insurance, risk management, as well as angst control measures. Revenues are funded through tax levies, interest, and board bonds. The original budget was $244,849. Projected ending fund balance with the amended budget is $246,149, which is an increase of $1,300. The additional $1,300 is a reduction of interest of $2,500. We did receive a donation of important money of $3,800. There are no changes in these expenditures. Okay, fund ninety. The fire prevention and safety fund. This fund is limited to paying expenses for capital improvements approved by the state of Illinois of life safety projects. Budget identified by the district's ten-year old life safety program, projected by RWE and ARCTEC. Revenue for this fund come from property taxes, interest, and life safety bond proceeds. The original ending fund balance was $471,393. The amended budget will be $494,664, which will increase $23,000 for our projected ending fund balance. It was really interesting, the budget of expenditures actually went down to $23,000, we actually had more expenses. So the $23,000 was just taken away the expenses that were within the year. Okay. So the total expenses, education fund, average fund wise, the graph that you're seeing now, this is everything that we spend money on in the education fund. And to what degree, CVC, regular education, we have special education, pathology, food service. Each one of these groupings, functions are, we call them. This is everything that is included in the education fund and it should be present in how much we spend on each. Any questions about this? Okay, that reminds me, the average daily balance. Okay, you guys should have it, you are correct. So the three funds that we watched, the average daily balance, education, O and M, and transportation. How I came up with this number was for FY21, the last day of the month, every month of FY21, and we provided a real good year. And that is the average daily balance. FY21, we gave it all of it, April 30th. And so currently, for this year, we have $653,122,000 more in our average daily balance. Now what this is used for is when the auditor comes in, it makes a happy day cash out, and this is what it reduces our score. It's how much average daily cash out.